Charlotte, will Charlotte be here tonight?
Thought so.
Yeah, I thought so.
Well, I was gonna say, awesome job, Alan, handling the election. I saw how many people actually voted. That was crazy.
Yeah.
Agreed.
It's really good.
Thank you, thank you. Again, it's not, not a one-person show, for sure, so. But thank you, appreciate it.
Hey, Alan, is there a way?
Oh, there we go.
Vote actually counted, or my, is there a way to see that it actually, there wasn't errors in absentee ballot or anything like that?
She's muted, you're muted.
Right.
There is, but we have up to 70 days to get that information into West Vote, but if you're really interested, we can check our budget book.
Okay, thank you. Cool. All right, everyone is here. So with that, I will call to order the meeting, the Committee of the Whole, for Monday, November 9th, 2020, at 6:30, 2 PM. We'll begin with the roll.
Alderperson Corrigan.
Present.
Alderperson Journey.
Here.
Alderperson Kemp.
Here.
Alderperson Cole. Alderperson Posey.
Here.
Alderperson Ricky.
Here.
Alderperson Ryan.
Here.
Alderperson Touche.
On the screen.
Mayor. Mayor Diaz.
Here.
All right, we'll move on to item three, public comment. Mr. Sayre, do we have any comment, or any speakers lined up, I should say?
No, we do not.
All right, next we'll move on to item four, which is approval of the minutes from the November 11th, 2019 Committee of the Whole Meeting. Corrections or motions? Alderiki.
Move approval.
Motion by Alderiki, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Kemp, last chance for corrections. If anyone can remember a year ago. All right, seeing no hands, all those in favor of approving the minutes from the November 11th, 2019 Committee of the Whole Meeting, say aye.
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 Opposed, no? And the minutes are approved. We'll move on to item five, which is the presentation of the proposed 2021 city budget.
All right, thank you. So tonight, Brian and myself are presenting the proposed 2021 city budget. I'll try to keep this, obviously, brief as we can, because we have a 7:00 PM council meeting, but if you have questions, you're more than welcome to interrupt me as we kind of go through this. Otherwise, we should have a few minutes at the end of this, if there are any questions. So I'm gonna share my screen. Hopefully, everybody can see that, and we'll get started here. So I think, as everybody knows, the city of Roanoke remains a fast-growing community. Since 2010, our population has increased by 20%. In 2020, our estimated population was just over 12,700 people, so we continue to increase in population. And it's obviously a growing area, since we all live here and know that. The equalized value also continues to grow. I mean, the demand to feel to be here remains strong. If you want to live here, if you want to own property here, partially shows the kind of the equalized value, that kind of continues to grow within the city. Once again, just looking at the percent change in non-TID equalized value, we had a change in 2020 of 6.3%. That sometimes fluctuates kind of over time here, but we've kind of held in that 6% to 8% range the last three years here, but once again, just shows strong demand, demand of, of, in the city. Net new construction, this is obviously the key number of how we look at, you know, how much can potentially be levied in the city. For 2020, the net new construction was 2%. That is slightly up from last year, which was 1.56. We kind of talked about this a couple, a couple of years ago, but, well, actually, last year, but we've had some big bumps over the last five years. That's partially due to, mostly due to Epic. When Epic has been expanding their campuses, we've seen some pretty significant increases in our net new construction over that time period. The 2% that we saw in 2020, and actually, the 1.5% as well, those are pretty average. If you look around the state, that's an average amount of growth, average amount of development that's occurring in the community. So in the past, I'd say we were definitely above average in what we were seeing from that new construction. Right now, we're just, we're average, we're typical of what you'd see in many, many places. So you do see that dip, but that's the reason for it, is we had some pretty big years because, because of Epic. So looking at some of the highlights of the 2021 budget, the proposed budget meets the levy limit of just over $14 million. Once again, the net new construction increased our assessed values by 2%. That new construction that came in, that's just buildings that are, you know, obviously, under construction and then at some point occupied as well, depending on which phase of where they are in that valuation process. The budget maintains our city service levels. We did not have any, any, I'd say, cuts in services. We didn't have any cuts or reductions in staff as well, so we've maintained that level of kind of services we have. And then finally, it also supports park improvements as well, which we'll get into some of the details here in the, in the near future. Other highlights included budgets, the funds for a new ambulance for the EMS service. That's something that's been talked about the last couple of years. They're on a rotating cycle, but that is, the funds are in there for the new ambulance at the EMS. Also funds for police body cameras. This is something that was discussed at last year's budget, that was, was removed just because of needed budget reductions. But the post-2021 budget does have the full funding for body cameras. It also funds capital requests at a department level, which we'll get into in a few minutes. And then it also funds equipment and facility replacement funds. So each year, from a levy standpoint, we put money into funds that, we pull money out in the future for vehicle replacements, or if something breaks at City Hall or the senior center, we have funds available as a, as a kind of building replacement or maintenance account. Some additional highlights is the, we are funding with levy and with fund balance 100% of the city street maintenance program. This is the mill and overlay or the chip seal program that we do each year. We're gonna continue to fund Public Safety EMS, Public Works, and their requests through replacement equipment programs through levy, and also continue to fund the facility replacement program through levy as well, so that's a levy item. Fund those kind of replacement accounts. It does provide a 2% cost of living increase to all non-representative employees, and it also contains no debt for the general fund. That was a priority, I know, for Mayor Diaz. So the proposed budget has no debt for the general fund. We do have $1.6 million in borrowing for the enterprise fund. That's for a stormwater pond. That's behind City Hall. That pond is planned as a regional pond, a regional facility. That would serve future kind of development in the downtown area, and that's been planned for the last few years, and will hopefully be built here in 2021. We did have some operating, we had some pressures on the budget. Some of those pressures included that the fact of the net new construction, that 2% increase. That's better than last year, but it's still a pressure that's created by it. Our debt service increased by more than $250,000. That's what we paid for the money that we borrowed in previous budgets. That includes both the principal and the interest that's associated with that. Fitron EMS, there was a levy increase of almost $70,000. We have minimum funding for the library in 2021. That increases almost $18,000. Our health insurance rates went up by 7.5%. That was an unexpected surprise towards the end of the, end of the budget process that, you know, the finance committee kind of worked through. We had an increase in capital requests, and then also, we had loss of, of revenue from the police school liaison officer. The fact that that person's not in the building, the district does help us pay for that officer, so that's something that we had to fully fund as part of the, of the 21 budget, and also as part of the 20 budget, which basically from March until now. So that's something we've had to deal with as well.
One quick question. So could you explain the library minimum funding level increase and why that's a requirement?
Sure. So in, in essence, we are part of the Dane County Library System. As part of that, when the Epic TID closed, we had a large influx of, of dollar amounts that came into the, the city. It was such a large amount, and I'm gonna try to generalize this, so Brian can jump in if I misstate something. It was such a large amount that we worked with the Dane County Library in Dane County to kind of phase in that increase, because we do have to reach a minimum amount of funding to avoid being hit with the Dane County Library tax. So for the past three or four years, we've been phasing in that large influx from that Epic TIF closure that happened. So each year for the last three, four years, we've been gradually increasing the amount of library funding to meet the minimum required by, by the county and the Dane County Board. So in order to, once again, to avoid the tax, we have to fund the library at a minimum level, and since we have such a large influx of new tax dollars coming in, instead of having that have a one-time hit for one, for one year, we had a grace period, in essence, to phase that in over five years.
Okay, thanks.
So once again, looking at the levy limits, the total increase for this year is gonna be $286,000. That's what we can go up without having to claim a debt adjustment for the levy limit, so the proposed budget goes up to that amount. If we go over that amount, we'd have to, once again, claim a debt adjustment based upon the debt service and amount that's equal to reduction, a levy limit in next year's budget. So we went up to that approximately 2% increase as part of that levy process in the budget. So once again, looking at just where those funds are going, this is just an overall kind of summary of the general fund would have a 1% decrease, a bit of change in the levy of approximately $57,000. The library had that 17,852,000 dollar increase, that's a 1.7% increase. One to point out on here would be the senior center, there's an 8.49% reduction. What we did with the senior center, they had a large fund balance that was being unutilized, and we, we, so we, we kind of tapped into that just as a one-year to kind of get through this current cycle. Just because there was a large amount of funds that was in that fund balance that we felt we could utilize to kind of get us to where we need it from a budget standpoint. So it's not a reduction, per se, in the senior center budget. It's just a matter of how we reallocated some of those, those funds. So where, where kind of is that breakdown levy? Where's that money going? Well, approximately 5.4 million will go to the general fund, that's Public Safety, Public Works, city administration here at City Hall, police department, park and rec, building inspection. A good chunk of this, that 4.3 million goes to that debt service, and that's, that's been the, kind of a common thread over the last couple of years is, you know, some of our debt here is, we've been trying to get it more under control. That's part of the reason why we aren't doing any borrowing this year, is you're trying to get that debt number down. You know, less debt means you can spend money in different ways, but that debt number, and we'll have more slides here coming forward, is, is one of the challenges that we've faced over the last couple of years. Revenue is not expected. Most of it comes from property taxes. About 57% actually comes from property taxes. There's a variety of other sources where it comes from. The next big kind of bucket is gonna be the kind of intergovernmental revenues, which is at 17.3%. So kind of looking at where that non-product, property tax revenue comes from. So state aid is one of those that increased this year by $272. Expenditure restraint, we did not qualify for that, and the 2020 budget also does not qualify, so there weren't any funds from that. There was a decrease in personal property state aid of about $5,000, but highway aids did increase about $161,000. So the highway aid is tied back to how many roads we're adding in the city, and we've obviously done a lot of roadwork the last couple of years. Other major revenue sources are interest on investments that increased by $20,000. Building permit fees for 2021, we're projecting a $10,000 decrease, just based upon what projects we think may, may start in 2021. Recreation revenue, there was an increase, we're projecting an increase of about $10,000. That's mainly due to the beach. The beach was very popular in 2020. We anticipate the same here in '21, if COVID, assuming COVID's still around. And then one of the big kind of reductions we had was room tax revenue, and that's a reduction, a decrease of $105,000. So from what we projected in 2020 of 180,000, we took that to 75,000 in, in 2021, so a pretty significant reduction, just because the hotels, obviously, are suffering right now. So looking at towards our expenditures, this is from the general fund only. 42% goes to public safety, 16.5% goes to Public Works. I kind of made the same comment last year that I'll make now. This is a pretty typical kind of breakdown that you see in most communities. Public Safety, Public Works are the two kind of largest expenditure departments, just from the fact of the work they do and the amount of staff they have. Park and recreation's at about 11%, and then development is planning and building inspection is at 5, 5.7%, and then general government is just typical city administration functions. So kind of looking once again at the proposed 2021 budget, the proposed budget would provide a levy, percent change in levy for TID at just over 2%. Our estimated city mill rate right now is $4.68, and then a little bit more added on to it, so 4.6816. That is a reduction from the mill rate of last year of 5.6017, which is a change of about 16%. That drastic reduction of the mill rate is due to the fact that we went through a reassessment this year. So all the city values were, were changed as part of that. So it's, I wouldn't say it's necessarily, you know, no, people will not see a 16% reduction in their taxes. The, the, the change in their potential taxes will depend on what their home came in and also the other taxing jurisdictions, but that mill rate did drop significantly because of that revaluation. So kind of looking more closely at it as well, once again, the estimated kind of city portion of mill rate after TID is 4.8514. The average home, which the average home based upon a new city assessment is $348,400, and that average assessment resulted in an increase in value from an assessment standpoint of approximately 28%. The city portion as share of their taxes would be $1,677. It's very difficult this year to look at last year's average to this year's average, because the numbers, the, the, the average last year is, is at a good comparable, because everyone's values, home values change. So if we went around the room and talked about what my house went up on, what the, what the increase in my house was compared to everybody else's, the numbers aren't gonna line up, so it's very difficult for us to do an apples-to-apples comparison from last year to this year. You know, what we can say is, you know, levy, the levy portion went up approximately 2%, what someone's total increase will be, will be dependent upon that revaluation of how much their, the home went up in value as part of that reveal process. I'm sure it's gonna be a common question that staff will get when people pay the taxes. I'm sure it's a question elected officials might receive as well, but a lot of that is gonna be dependent on what the person's increase in their, you know, actual revaluation was. So that's, it's, it's gonna be a little complicated this year because of that revaluation, because there was such a significant change. The previous average home value in the city was $272,000, so we had a very significant increase in what our average is now. So kind of looking at the mill rate over time, we have a pretty drastic drop here in 2021. Once again, that is due to the revaluation that we went through. You know, over time, it's kind of hovered in that 6, 6.5 range, but with that, with that revaluation, we did, we're having that big drop here in 2021. Proposed personnel changes is part of the budget. The only change is that the library added some additional pages, which resulted in a .2 FTE change. That was the only personnel change that occurred. Looking at projects that were funded with capital, rehabilitation program, that's the asphalt program at Public Works, reservicing the tennis courts and adding pickleball courts at one of the city's parks, some parking lot maintenance work at Sennetti Park, and then also path, park path repaving as well. Fire department's looking at some equipment and radio, radio replacements, and then once again, the revolving fund is funded with levy, and that's the equipment replacement, Public Works, parks, equipment at Public Safety, equipment at EMS, and then the facility replacement funds at City Hall and Public Works at Park. So making sure we fund those as a ability to draw on those and reduce our borrowing in the future. Looking at capital funded with capital revolving funds, we'll be using some money to upgrade the HBAC software here at City Hall. Public Works is gonna be having a new patrol truck and new tool cap. Both those vehicles currently have issues. Parks will be having a new lawnmower that, existing lawnmower right now also has some maintenance issues. The police department will have adding computers, and then obviously, some additional facility cameras, some exercise equipment that's out of date, mostly just standard things that they have now that is, is, is brought to the course of its life. And then, once again, the ambulance portion for, for the city, for the EMS is about $166,000. Other sources of funds that we have here, we're looking at from, from capital, setting up a third polling station. This was $50,000 from an Epic grant that I think we talked about a month ago. Once again, a sidewalk maintenance program. We've been planning out some street improvements on Mark Drive and Eastview and Elm, Elm, Elm Street. Those have been talked about the last couple of budget cycles, but trying to kind of pre-plan a larger project in the future. Looking at some street trees and park trees. And then obviously, the police body worn cameras at $97, $98,000. The fire departments, they need to make some repairs to their in-floor heating. This will solve that problem once and for all. And then they also had some grants for traffic preemption, and then also a message board, which are in that Epic grant as well, to be on the back of a truck. Only borrow we have, once again, is that 1.6 million in the enterprise fund for the stormwater pond behind City Hall. Looking at our debt service, this is how much debt that we pay in 2021, so we'll be paying a total debt service of 7.6 million. Once again, we're trying to get this number down as best we can by not borrowing as much money, but we have a lot of money that goes towards principal, and we have a lot of money that goes towards interest. So once again, long-term, the goal is to reduce debt, so we can fund other items. We are allowed to take on a lot of debt. This is no different than when you buy a house yourself. The bank tells you you can spend a lot of money. We do have a legal debt margin of $71 million. We currently have approximately $51 million that, that's out there. So we, we do have the ability, if we chose to take on more debt, we can do that, and obviously, the council and the mayor is very supportive of trying not to take on debt. Once again, just a different way of looking at it. The blue line is what we're allowed to take on is debt. The yellow line is actual, the actual debt that we have. This is percentage, so the line is doing what it should be. It's starting to flatten and slightly reduce. That's, that's the goal here. We want to not be climbing up like we were for the past few years. And then once again, just looking at our debt service, this is just how much we pay in, in actual, the debt payments, the principal and interest, and once again, we've had a steady climb here. The goal is to get this going in the opposite direction and going down, not so much up. The more we pay for debt, obviously, once again, the less we can, other things we can do. Fund balance, the city does have a very healthy fund balance. Our policy recommends a range of 25 to 35%. We're currently at 35%. Our goal is to remain there. We try to stay high, because that is our rainy day fund. It's basically a savings account that if we need to tap into for something, that money is available. We did use $425,000 from this fund balance as part of the 2021 budget. We typically do that, that every year, obviously, but we are maintaining that 35%. That's good from a borrowing standpoint, even if we're not gonna borrow as much. That's something that the, that Moody's looks at when we, when we have conversations with them. So once again, it's a quick presentation here, this tonight. I will be emailing out a budget amendment form. If you are requesting any budget amendments, those will be due on November 18th at 9:00 AM. The form, and then obviously, the form's on the next page, but the, the council will have a public hearing on this at November 23rd at 7:00 PM. There'll be action on the budget amendments if necessary, and then action on the budget and the levy. The form itself will take the kind of same format we've used the last couple of years. There'll be a budget area on it. You'll describe what could the amendment is, what the dollar amount is. Staff will have the opportunity to borrow, or excuse me, to comment on the, on, on the amendment below, and then we'll have some accounting details in the bottom. So if you do have a budget amendment request, you'll have to identify what you want to change, but then also need to identify where that money will come from. If you do have questions, I would encourage you, before you submit the form, reach out to Brian and I. We can, we can kind of talk you through it. It's, it's typically easier if we kind of talk about it before you submit the form, just to make sure we get it done correctly, and that there aren't any questions about it. So that, that's, that's the presentation. I know we worked a lot with the finance committee on this. I just want to say, thanks, thank you to them. They did a great job. They're, they're, they're great to work with. Staff is very appreciative of their efforts. Department heads as well, they did a great job, and I just thank you, Brian, as well. Brian did a lot of the heavy lifting on it. You don't see him typically at council meetings, as he said before this meeting started, but he, he does a lot of the work on the budget behind the scenes and does a great job with it, so I just, thanks to him as well, too. But I, I'd be happy to answer any questions. I'm sure Brian would be happy answering questions, or the finance committee can add anything if they choose.
Thank you for that presentation. Alder Touche.
What did you budget for the firefighters?
In the actual budget for the fire department, is that, do we have five pencil in there, Brian, as kind of, depending what happened, or is it four? You're muted, Brian.
I thought it was four.
Four, okay.
And that matches offered, if I remember right. Is that correct?
Come again, sorry.
That matches what we offered, is that correct?
No. No. Does not. What we offered was less than that. We, we typically try to budget worst case, so we don't have gaps created.
Are there questions on the budget presentation? Well, if you do think of any, I would definitely encourage people to talk to Mr. Sayre or Mr. Lemers, and if you have any questions about budget amendments, also reach out to them, like they said, so. And with that, seeing no other hands, we will move on to item six, which is adjournment. Motion to adjourn. Motion by Alder Touche, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alderiki. All those in favor of adjourning in this committee of the whole meeting, say aye.
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 Opposed, no? And we adjourned at 6:56 PM. See you guys in four minutes. And we adjourned at 6:56 PM. See you guys in four minutes. All right. I think that's everyone. So with that, called to order the meeting of the Verona Common and Council for Monday, November 9th, 2020 at 7:02 PM. I will begin with the roll.
Alder person Cronin.
Present.
Alder person Journey.
Here.
Alder person Kim.
Here.
Alder person Cole. Alder person Posey.
Here.
Alder person Ricky.
Here.
Alder person Ryan.
Here.
Alder person Touche.
You're on the screen.
All right. Got a full house. With that, we'll move on to item three, which is public comments. Mr. Sayre, do we have any public comments?
Yes, I have two people that have signed up for it. First one is going to be Tim Hagan. Let me promote Tim.
Good evening. I think everyone can see me.
Yep, and hear you.
They can hear me. Well, it's better yet, I guess. I sound better than I look. So first of all, I want to thank the commission or the council members for giving opportunity to speak. I've talked to a couple of you, if you have phone, and I really appreciate you guys giving me feedback, phone calls back. I've also talked with the mayor at length the other night. I talked with the police chief. Many of the planning commission members. And this is all regarding to the 121, 125 Berkeley property, which is real close to my neighborhood. I'll be very brief. I just want to give you a couple of points, then I'll let you get it on your business. Too big, too many people and too many units. And I'm going to probably repeat that a couple of times. For the established neighborhoods in Verona, and I think you guys are also getting some feedback from the classic project. I think it's, it's probably some of the same type of terms that you're using, use, or you're going to be listening to, too big, too many people and too many units in a well-established neighborhood. And I just have concern about the future of our neighborhood. As longtime taxpayers, longtime residents, longtime voters, I think we all have the same concerns. And I think you'll be hearing some, I think you've heard some, from some of my neighbors. I just want to give a shout out to the Jensen's, Mr. And Mrs. Jensen. They wrote a nice letter that I echo their concerns. Hopefully you got that. Hopefully you've also heard from some other neighbors that have called you. There are rules and I call them rules, but I guess they're also zoning, zoning ordinances that founding fathers, however many years ago, those were put in place for a reason. And I guess my question is, why aren't we following the rules? They're there for a reason. I think it's to protect the, to protect everyone and meaning the taxpayers that have lived in the community for so long. So my question to you in conclusion, I guess, is can we follow the rules? That particular project, there is absolutely no green space. So to take out two 10-unit buildings and to put in 80 units, huge building that's bigger than it should be with too many people, too big and too many units, where are those kids going to play that are going to be living there? The traffic and the parking issues already in our neighborhood, with the addition of the high school, secondary access. We're already going to be having huge, huge parking and traffic problems. And I, I just think we really need to tap the brakes on this project. Let's think about it a little bit before we start adding that many units in a well-established neighborhood. And I, I thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments.
Thanks, Tim. Okay, next up I have Floyd May. Floyd is on his phone. Instead of the video, we had some issues with him on video at Plan Commission. So I'm gonna... All right Floyd, I allowed you to talk. You should be able to unmute yourself with a star six.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you so much for your time. I appreciate it. And I just want to express the concerns with the, with the house that's coming down on 300 East Jeffers, or I'm sorry, 300 East Verona Avenue. I live right next door to it. My concerns is I had a home inspection done and the attic has got vermiculite in it. And according to a readout I got from the EPA off their website, anything that has vermiculite in it has to be assumed, even if it's tested to have asbestos. So I, my concerns are that this house has to be taken down in a certain way to assure that the neighborhood kids and the residents are not going to be affected by the dust from this insulation that has vermiculite in it. The other part is that the outside of the house has got lead paint on it and that also can cause dust and problems with the residents in the neighborhood. Not to mention that it, when it gets put in the landfill, if it's not placed in a proper spot, that the EPA okay's, it can get into the groundwater or cause other issues. That's my biggest concern with next door. I just want to make sure that I have no problems with the building going up as being desired, as long as the lights and all the other stuff I mentioned before. They're small, miniscule, or minuscule to me as far as issues, but my, my concern is the possible safety to make sure that there's no children or residents in this neighborhood affected by the demolition of this house with the the verification of there being vermiculite in it. That has to be handled according to the EPA in a certain way. It has to be assumed that it has asbestos. Even if it's tested, it still has to be assumed that there's asbestos in it. And the lead paint issue. I, I, I won't drag it on, but I appreciate your comments and your, and listening to my concerns on this with so many children living in this neighborhood. Not to mention the other residents. I wanted to address this issue. Thank you for your time. Oh, and if it's okay, I'll drop off copies of what I printed out from the EPA up at City Hall tomorrow, along with building inspection report that I got from when I had it inspected, when it was owned by my mother-in-law, which will say on page five that it does have lead paint and does have vermiculite. Thank you all so much.
Yeah, there's drop boxes at City Hall. So I think you can just put it in there. Thank you for your comments.
Those are the only speakers I had registered.
All right. With that, we will move on to item four, which is approve the minutes from the October 26, 2020 Common Council Meeting. Motions or corrections?
Move approval?
Motion by Alder Ricky, seconded by Alder Touche. Last chance for corrections to the minutes. Seeing no hands. All those in favor of approving the minutes from the October 26, 2020 Common Council Meeting, say aye.
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 Propose no? And that motion passes. Next up, we'll move on to item five, Mayor's Business. I have one quick thing. I just want to extend my thanks to all the people who helped make the elections in Verona a success. Clerk Clark, and you know, in line with what she said earlier at the committee, the whole meeting, it's, it's not one individual person, although I will say that clerk, it's a central part of the clerk's job. And so I think Ellen deserves a ton of credit for it. Along with everyone else who I think did a wonderful job, I think. There were a lot of people that voted and I think that's wonderful. And I, as, as far as I've heard, everyone had a good experience. And so I think, I think that's something we all, we all can be proud of. With that, we will move on to item six, which is announcements. Any announcements from the council? Alder Journey.
So Wednesday, November 11th is Veterans Day. And usually there's a program at the senior center, but because of COVID this year, there will not be an indoor program. There also are usually meals served, but now there'll be a drive-through meals from 12 to 1:00 in the afternoon. Veterans get their meals free and guests of veterans $5 and you can order or let the senior center know if you want a meal or not. And then, but there will be a flag raising ceremony at 11 o'clock in the morning at Hometown Junction Park. And then there will be a slideshow of local veterans and a, and a slideshow of the local veterans and also of the flag raising ceremony that will be on the Verona TV channel starting Wednesday, November 18th. Thank you.
Thank you. Other announcements from the council? Seeing no other hands, we'll move on to item seven, Administrator's Report. Mr. Sayre.
Thank you. A few items tonight. This Wednesday, November 11th, we have our first Sustainability Task Force meeting at 7:00 PM. So if anyone's interested in that, I would encourage you to, to check that out. It's the first meeting, so it's trying to get their feet underneath them and figure out what direction we're going here. So should be a good meeting. Mayor Diaz and I are providing, are doing a presentation on the state of the city on November 17th at 8:00 AM. That's all done by Zoom. So if anyone is interested in hearing that or watching that, contact the Chamber of Commerce and they can get you signed up for that, that presentation. A tourism meeting on the 17th, and then the council meeting on November 23rd at 7:00 PM. That's where we'll have the budget public hearing and potential adoption of the budget. We have a Plan Commission meeting on December 7th, and then we're planning a special Common Council meeting on December 9th, potentially for the classic redevelopment project. And then we'd also have a council meeting on December 14th. So those are the kind of council meetings we're targeting right now in December, the special one on the 9th. And then the regular meeting on the 14th, and then we would not have one on December 28th. That's right after the, the holiday. So that's the plan for now. So if you can mark your calendars, we would appreciate that. Couple updates on, on COVID. We continue to monitor the situation around the state, around the county. The library remains closed, obviously due to the recent spikes in the cases. The library board has been discussing this. They discussed it at the November 4th meeting. And they'll continue discussions at their December meeting. So the library will remain closed until kind of library board provides direction and guidance on how that can potentially reopen to the public. The library continues to offer curbside pickup. I know I've used it personally. It's pretty easy. You go online, you sit up for a time. It's quite, quite simple. So I'd encourage people to utilize that, that feature. Some of the election numbers that didn't make it into my report, and Ellen will correct me if I misstate any of these. Number of absentees that were returned by mail were 5,383. In-person absentee numbers, we had voting in person, but absentee was 1,906. So the total number of absentees that voted, people that voted absentee was 7,289. So we have that, that's, we have we have about, oh, what's the number here? Just under 9,800, 9,900 people registered to actually vote in the city. So we had about 1,600 actually vote in person on election day. What that comes out to is a pretty impressive number. We had 89.8% of the voters registered in the city actually voted in the, at this election. And of those voters, 82% voted absentee, which our staff were very thankful for that. But we, we had a very high turnout. So it's a pretty, pretty impressive number. We're almost at 90% of our voters actually voted. It's pretty, pretty incredible. So did I mess any of those up, Ellen? No? Okay. So anyways, if you have any questions, let me know. Ellen can help answer any questions on the election data too, if anyone has those questions.
Thank you. Any questions on the Administrator's Report? Alder Kemp.
Not to be a huge nerd, but I'm just going to be, that 90% turnout is huge. I kind of would like to know at some point, what was the next highest percentage of turnout and when that was? I don't know if we can look at that. That'd be kind of cool to see. So.
I can certainly take a look at that. I'm guessing in recent history, at least, it would be 2016. You're talking in terms of total turnout?
Yes.
Yeah. Sure, I can check on that, Brian.
Other questions on the Administrator's Report? Seeing no other hands, we will move on to item eight, Engineers' Report. Ms. Fisher.
Thank you. So for the Eastside Interceptor project, the contract has been executed by all parties. The virtual pre-conference, pre-construction conference was held on Thursday, October 22nd with the prime and subcontractors. A virtual public information meeting was held on October 29th. Information for the public meeting can be found under the project link on the Public Works webpage. Construction is set to commence this week with minor activities. Installation of underground sanitary sewers not scheduled to start until early December. For the well six pumping station construction, the contractor has addressed the majority of the punch list items in order to meet substantial completion requirements. City staff is in the final stages of receiving training and obtaining test results prior to bringing well six online. Once this occurs, the project will be accepted and ultimately go through the standard closeout process. For the Woods at Cathedral Point Phase One, the public utilities are virtually complete. Work on the water main relocation and storm sewer pipes at the intersection of Range Trail and County M was completed over the last two weeks. Natural gas utility pipes are being installed. The electric and telecommunications utilities are delayed. For the Sugar Creek Commons Public Improvements Project, so those are the public improvements of West Verona Avenue and, and Legion that are associated with Sugar Creek Commons. That has been on the list here and now that project is expected to start in 2021. At one point, they'd talked about starting it this year. So this project will be taken off the report and then re-added once the, the work is back on the schedule. For the Harmony Hills Detention Basin Cleanout, virtual public information meetings were held on October 14th and 20th with assistance through the library. Work is scheduled to begin, I guess, part, partway through last week. The contractor mobilized equipment to the site on October 30th. And finally, the North Main Street storm sewer connection from TDS, all work within the right of way is completed. Work will continue on the private property and on street, and on-street parking will be limited for safety. So with that, I can take any questions.
Any questions on the Engineers' Report? Seeing no hands, thank you. We'll move on to item nine, Committee Reports. First up, we have 9A Finance Committee. Alder Kemp.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I'd like to make a motion for the payment on the bills in the amount of $387,451.44.
Motion by Alder Kemp, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Cronin, Alder Kemp.
Yes, just for the sake of explanation, there was a payment of $54,495.51 to 1901 Incorporated Mechanical. That was for the clean air systems that we've had installed in City Hall, police station, the library, the senior center and public works. On page two, there was a payment of $138,256 to the City of Madison for our third quarter transit payment. Keep in mind, that's reimbursed by our federal funds and Epic. And finally, on page five, our $30,000 payments to the Verona Area Chamber for our third quarter room tax payments.
You've heard the explanation. Questions, comments on the motion to pay the bills? Seeing no further discussion, all those in favor of paying the bills in the amount specified, signify by saying aye.
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 Propose no? That motion passes. Anything further from finance?
No, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Next we'll move up to, or move on to 9B Plan Commission. Alder Cole.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to make a motion to approve resolution R-20-043, approved. approving a general development plan and precise implementation plan that will allow for the construction of a two-story, 4,700 square foot, 4,706 square foot building for a clinic with two apartment units located at 300 East Verona Avenue.
Motion by Alder Cole, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Ricky, uh, Alder Cole.
The Plan Commission held the required public hearing on November 4th, 2020, and public comments included support for this type of land use, questions of handling asbestos during demolition, support for the building design as it complements the neighborhood, and concerns regarding lighting, fence and drainage on the property. Comments from the Plan Commission included verification for the enforcement of lighting, follow-up questions regarding drainage and support for the land use and building design. The Plan Commission voted seven to zero to approve the general development plan and precise implementation plan for 300 East Verona.
Thank you for that explanation. Uh, I'm going to call myself first, uh, quick with, uh, if staff can address the two comments, um, that were raised during a public comment, I just, I mean, if there's evidence that there's lead paint and there's evidence that there is asbestos, uh, I think we want to make sure the teardown is safe.
Right, so I have, the architect is here tonight, Mark Shellpepper, can I bring him into the meeting and he can answer those questions?
Yeah, if, if, if he would be better suited.
Yes. Mark, you there? Well, if we can't get him up and going, I can answer the questions. I don't see a video or a microphone next to his name. Oh, there we go, there we go.
Do you know if, if he's phone or computer?
His computer.
Okay. Can we unmute him or, oh, maybe?
Mark, you there? Hello?
Okay, we can hear you.
Can you, can you guys see me? You don't, you don't need to see my face, that's okay. No. Um, hi, everybody, uh, I'm Mark Shellpepper, I'm the architect, uh, with Case Four Architecture. Uh, Amanda Pransberger's listening and she's on her way home from clinical round. So, um, just to address the two comments from Mr. Floyd. Um, so we did have an environmental report done, um, to Mr. Floyd's comment. His was a home inspection, so it did not, uh, to my understanding, take it to the level of actually testing the materials. So we had shared, uh, the report with, with Adam earlier on, uh, probably last week regarding, uh, kind of the full environmental report. The vermiculite was tested as part of that report and came back as no asbestos detected within that. Mr. Floyd had mentioned the idea of, or I guess commented that the EPA has guidance out there to assume that it, that it does hold asbestos, uh, related to the vermiculite. Um, and that, that is their, that is their comment, but their other comment is also because they provide no guidance for how to go about testing it. Um, the DNR and OSHA have outlined ways of testing the vermiculite for asbestos. And that is, uh, what, what, what the asbestos, what the vermiculite was tested as in that process for this. And, and again, there is no, uh, asbestos detected within that vermiculite. Uh, the lead paint, um, that is, that is a, uh, that is true, uh, that if there is lead paint within the building, if you're looking to recycle the materials or have them put into a landfill as clean material, that, that, uh, that lead paint would need to be removed as part of the overall process. All of these materials and any typical kind of construction waste demo type, type of, uh, action and process, that goes to a separate landfill, it goes to a landfill that is deemed strictly for construction and demo waste. And the DNR and OSHA, as well as EPA, again, have established these landfills, so you're not taking on the cost prohibitive way of, say, uh, getting rid of lead paint, one, if you know you have it, or two, if it's buried under things. They've, they've accounted for that in these landfills, and that's where, that's where all of this waste will be going. Um, whether, uh, whether it has, has or had lead paint at any given time, it'll be going into that construction and demolition type of landfill. So we've certainly, uh, we, we understand, uh, and this certainly isn't one of the first buildings that we've, we've torn down as part of a process. Um, and the demo contractor that comes in will certainly understand those kind of guidelines that they need to be under. They'll have this report and, uh, they'll be following those recommendations that really say there is no asbestos in the building based on all the varieties of testing that have gone on, uh, not only from the vermiculite, but, uh, caulking, uh, subfloors, tar paper within the wall, everything that, that, uh, an expert would look at and deem that could potentially have, uh, asbestos in a building of this age has been tested and none has been detected out of that testing, so.
If I could ask a quick follow-up question, um, uh, in, in regards to the paint, um, I, you know, it, it's good that it, it's not going to enter the normal waste stream, but, um, when the building is torn down, is there a chance and any of the lead paint could get in the air? Cause I can't imagine we want anyone breathing that in.
And, uh, the way that it's recommended for dealing with, with any of these demolitions, and I'm, and maybe some of you have seen how some of these, uh, older structures come down, but they're essentially, uh, soaked to the bone with water. Um, so everything is pretty much as heavy as it could possibly be. And that's not only for keeping the lead paint or any sort of, uh, issues that could be coming off of, off of the debris down. It's just for keeping the dust down in general, not to, not to become, uh, an issue for the neighbors or those around, but also the folks that are actually doing the demolition themselves. So there's a process as the building's coming down, prior to it, it's wet down during its demolition, it continues to be wet down. Uh, and then in some cases, if it is really, uh, we'll call it dirty or dusty, uh, they'll wet down the dumpsters before they even actually take them away from the site, just so it's not blowing out of the back of a dumpster as it's going, going down the street. So, yeah, there will, there are precautions that are taken to kind of minimize that.
Thank you. Um, I guess while you're up here, are there any questions from the council for the applicant? Uh, I think that's all for questions?
All right.
Thank you. Thank you. Motion before the body, uh, questions or comments on this motion? Seeing no, uh, discussion? Um, all those in favor of resolution number R-20-043, approving a general development plan and a precise implementation plan for a two-story, 4,706 square foot building located at 300 East Verona Avenue, uh, say aye.
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 Oppose, no? And that motion passes, uh, Alder Cole?
Thank you. Um, next, I'm making a motion to approve resolution R-20-044, approving a general development plan, um, to construct an 80-unit apartment building located at 121 and 125 Berkeley Road.
Uh, motion by Alder Cole, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alder Kemp, uh, Alder Cole.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, the Plan Commission held the required public hearings on November 4th, 2020, and public comments included concerns about the density, concerns of traffic and overflow parking, concerns that the minimum underground parking policy is not being followed, and why are there two different projects tied to each other by the property owner? Comments from the Plan Commission included explanation of a housing policy, the impacts of apartments in the city, praise that the existing tenants are able to maintain their current rent rates, concern for lack of green space for children and families, discussion regarding stormwater management, a discussion regarding parking concerns with current clientele and future clientele. Confirmation of the landscaping plan will be in the next application for review. Recommended native plantings for the landscaping plan, the building color should be lightened, the, sorry. Verification of the surrounding land uses in the vicinity of the property. The Plan Commission voted seven to zero to approve the general development plan with the following exemptions to be granted. A, the setback for the front yard setback, northern property line, will be a minimum of 10 feet. B, porches can encroach into the side and rear yard setbacks, which means that they will not meet the minimum requirement by two feet. C, the maximum height of the building will be 40 feet or three stories tall. D, parking will be reduced to a minimum of 66 underground stalls and 53 surface stalls. And E, density for the property located in the UR zone will be 46.5 dwelling units per acre.
Thank you for that explanation. Uh, questions, comments on this motion? Uh, Alder Kemp?
No, we, I believe we've discussed this before, what guarantees do we have that the rents would stay the same?
Uh, Mr. Sayer?
Don't, I mean, we don't, we don't condition that, so I mean, that's just what the, the owner and applicant is telling you. From, but from a city standpoint, we don't, we don't have that ability.
Yeah, that's kind of what I thought, but I just wanted to click, make sure everyone had that same idea spinning in their head.
Uh, motion before the body, uh, other question, uh, other touche? Oh, you're muted still.
My bad, sorry.
Yeah.
Does this property owner slash developer have other work that's happening in Verona?
Yeah, this is, uh, Hughes, uh, Mr. Hughes owns the, will be the Dunkin' Donut if it passes, uh, property on, uh, East Verona Avenue.
Okay, so no, nothing apartment-wise to really kind of judge character and so on?
Uh, Mr. Sayer?
Uh, he, he owns the, there's currently two buildings on this property, he owns those. Um, those buildings are, I think, built in the late 60s, early 70s. And then he also, along with his family, owns a bunch of properties on East Verona Avenue from the, the White House at the corner of Verona and Lincoln Street, kind of west to the, it's a bridal shop now, uh, on Verona Avenue. So they, they own those properties as well.
Thank you.
Uh, Alder Ricky, then Alder Cole, then Alder Cronin.
Um, can someone talk about the traffic concerns and why staff would, um, consider that to not be of concern as well as address the, um, exemption for density? Why the density is so much higher than the original zoning allows?
Uh, Mr. Sayer?
Sure, so from a traffic standpoint, um, I can share my screen here, it might be easier. Bear with me here. Property is, is located on Industrial Drive and, uh, Berkeley Road in yellow on the screen before you. So generally, it's located in a industrial multifamily area, so there's existing multifamily units on the property right now, and also to the north and also to the east. Um, so from a, from a traffic standpoint, um, you know, I don't, you know, staff has looked at this. We didn't really see this as a concern, just because it's not, it's an, it's an existing use in this area. Um, the surrounding uses are, on this side of the area at least, is, is mostly, you know, existing multifamily or industrial. It does feed out to South Nine Mountain Road. Um, obviously, that road is sized and has the ability to serve the traffic from this. It also feeds it through Marietta and also will feed through Industrial Drive in the future, so, um, we didn't see any concerns with it. Um, the density, the density is, I think, around, I think it's 40 some units per acre. I don't have the exact number, I think it's 46 units, dwelling units per acre. Uh, this is something that's been discussed, I believe, the Plan Commission, possibly at the council during the concept review. You know, the goal of the applicant is, part of this is to kind of keep those rental rates down. As part of that, it's a function of the density, it's also a function of the units. There's a lot of studio and one-bedroom units in this development. Um, there's a few two-bedrooms as well, but it's mostly those studios and one-bedrooms. I believe those account for 60 out of the 80 units in, in the development. Um, so part of the reason why the, the density is so high is because of the function of that. Uh, it's part of the planned development process, and most of, I think all of you, all of us have been through this a bunch of times. You can request zoning exemptions as part of that, and obviously, the density is one exemption that can be looked at and potentially granted. Uh, if it was done with straight zoning, uh, it's typically that it's the 12 dwelling units per acre. That's what's allowed by the urban residential zoning district. Um, we do also have our traffic engineer tonight, so if we start really getting into the traffic questions, I can bring Jess Bellmeyer in the meeting too.
Uh, did that answer your questions, Alder Ricky?
Yes, thank you.
Uh, next, I have, uh, Alder Cole and Alder Cronin.
I was wondering if Mr. Sayer could address what we discussed in the Plan Commission meeting as far as why, um, the, the green space and why we didn't think that there needed to be, you know, like a, a huge amount of green space for, for families?
Sure, so that once again goes back to kind of the dwelling unit makeup. Once again, we've got 60 units that are, uh, studio or one-bedroom units. Those typically don't attract families. Uh, we do have 20 two-bedroom units, those could potentially have a family or a child or two in it, most likely part of one child. Uh, but the, the, the proposed kind of unit mix in this development is, is going to be catered towards, you know, most likely not kids, just because you've got a large influx of, uh, 60 to 60 units of those studios and one, one bedrooms. Um, you know, the property is on the bike trail, so it does have connectivity if somebody wanted to hop on the bike trail and easily get down to, you know, potentially the new high school, fields that are there. Uh, we'll also have the, the plaza area, uh, kind of north of here, when the Sugar Creek School redevelops as well. So there will be some potential, uh, activity in outdoor areas and green spaces, so there is, there, there is some in the area. But, uh, generally, from a staff standpoint, we didn't feel a large amount of onsite green space, like at the playground, would be necessary because of the unit mix in this development.
Um, did that answer your question, Alder Cole? I have Alder Cronin, then Alder Kemp.
Okay, Mr. Mayor. Um, so this was kind of a surprise for me because I tend to be, um, very much in favor of high-density housing and infill development, uh, that allows people to live and work and walk and get out of their cars. But the table that's included in the general development plan that shows comparisons with other apartments that we've approved recently, just kind of blew me away. I mean, 46.5 dwelling units per acre on a 1.7 acre site, um, I think is a lot. Um, and, and I also share the concerns that, um, neighbors have raised about traffic and parking. Um, I know the developer has indicated that currently, most residents that would stay, uh, may not have vehicles, but they may not stay forever. Um, what happens when there is tenant turnover? Would there be a higher demand for parking? And if that can't be accommodated on the site, um, what is the impact on spillover into the neighborhood? And finally, um, yes, the lack of any outdoor green space for any kids that were part of the complex um, is concerning because even though it is on the bike path, um, younger kids aren't going to be hopping on their bikes. Um, so, you know, I, I would rather see a portion of the site set aside for some kind of play space for kids. But, um, yeah, I, I'm, as of right now, not supportive of this development.
Uh, Alder Kemp?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, one quick question, um, if in fact, um, we've made an exception in this case for density, um, what, what's specific about, what's specific about this development that allowed us to do so? And if that's the case, how do we, um, what, you know, what precedent are we setting right now moving forward? So, put another way, if we do this in this case, are we putting ourselves in a situation where we may have to do this for the next person to come along?
Uh, Mr. Sayer?
No, you don't have to do it for the next person that comes along. I mean, density is a function of the number of, of units in there, obviously. So I mean, this is the same, a very, we had a very similar discussion and conversation with the Lincoln Street Apartments with, with that developer, if you recall, where, you know, you can, you can take the same building and potentially swap out some of the studios or one bedrooms and put two bedrooms in, so you can start kind of playing with that from the standpoint of, um, you can get that unit count kind of changed around by kind of keeping the same building footprint. So, um, you know, why, why would you potentially give it to this and other ones? I mean, one could argue this is closer to your downtown, uh, this is obviously redevelopments. I mean, you can't hold the developer to it, but he has, and he's been committed to trying to hold those rental rates for those people living in there. Um, you know, you, you have those items going for it that you typically don't, wouldn't have because this is a redevelopment of an existing apartment building. Um, there's existing units that are there, there's 20 units that are there today. Um, but, you know, from a strictly development standpoint, I don't think you're really giving up too much because it's, it's a three-story building. Um, typically the, 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 the kind of give on some of these is when you start getting above that from a design and function standpoint. Um, when it gets to four stories, that's when you start getting arguments of, well, across the street they did four stories. Why can't I do that here? Um, the, the, the density though is just strictly a function of how many units are in there. They could, they could change those units. They could make them a studio a hundred square feet bigger and lose five, six units as well too. It's, 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 you know, that's, that's, that's my feeling on, when you look at density, it's sometimes it's not a, sometimes it's not the best indicator of a project just because it's usually the look of the project, the design of the project. That's what I, I've said that before. I'll keep saying it, but, um, most likely if there's a concern with the density, the developer would probably take a look at the unit mix and probably increase the number of two-bedroom units or change the size of the units itself to, to make that density number function. Um, i- if the, the density is a concern too, I guess the question would be, you know, what, what is an acceptable number? And we put those tables in the, in the packets just for this reason as well. So that, the council and Plan Commission understand this is what the density of some of these projects are because just by looking at them on the street, nobody would know what the number is. I, I wouldn't myself.
Okay. No, I appreciate it. I, I do generally think that in the downtown, we should try and get more, uh, dense, dense properties there, um, for, to, uh, you know, feed the downtown and, and I, and I'm not worried about green space as much because I know with that new development, there's going to be some there. Um, I just wanted to get some clarification before we voted. Thank you.
Uh, Alder Journey?
So, um, my original thought was I, I like the idea of relocating, uh, twenty units and then also, uh, the motel, uh, units into this property, um, and then with the, uh, affordability thing. But then when I started, you know, to look at the numbers and so then this gets to the den- density also is that eighty units are going on to one-point-seven acres with a forty-six point five units per acre. And that's higher than any of the other units that were shown on that chart, um, including the, um, the developments that, um, had, um, um, more acres, um, for their, um, development. Also in relation to the parking, so a hundred and nineteen parking spaces, when the city recommends a hundred and fifty-nine. Um, I, I go, uh, through Industrial Drive and Berkeley backdoor to get to downtown Verona. And already in, um, in Industrial Drive is already a single lane, particularly during the week when there's, uh, pickup trucks and wagons parked along both sides of the street. So if you have a traffic coming in both directions, somebody's got to turn off to the side just to let the, the other car through. Um, and then also in terms of, you know, the, the idea, the assumption that some of the tenants won't have cars. Um, I have a hard time, um, predicting, uh, human behavior based upon assumptions. Um, perhaps the only way that you'd be able to control the number of people that have cars is not to, to tell some people not to have a car. So, um, I don't necessarily, um, buy, buy the idea that there's not going to, we don't need as much parking, um, because not everybody's going to have a car. Um, and then in this particular, particular project, there was an exemption asked for every single, uh, zoning ordinance, um, in the project. And then also I started thinking about when we have, um, a, a, apartment developments going into already established neighborhoods. There is going to be neighborhood concern about that. Um, some people have been here for a long, long time and, you know, it changes, um, their paradigm of where they're going to live. Um, as opposed to like if you have, uh, something going up on Cathedral Point, which is a whole brand-new neighborhood and it's already established with quote, um, dense housing and, and neighborhood. So in, in my mind, I'm, I'm just thinking to be a little bit more sensitive to some of the already established neighborhoods. Um, and I, and I'm all for development and progress, uh, but also, um, thinking about being somewhat sensitive, uh, to the neighborhood concerns. So just on that basis, uh, I would have a tendency not to support this project.
Um, Alder Ryan?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Um, I appreciate everyone's comments as far. I also appreciate, um, Mr. Sayer's, you know, comments around, um, the dwellings per acre and how that can be manipulated to say different, you know, represent different things. Um, but I do, I am concerned about the density also and um, it's, you know, it starts to feel like sardines, I think, in a can. And I wonder, I also heard Mr. Sayer's comments around the, um, owner trying to maintain rents for the individuals who currently live in those buildings. And if I understand correctly, I think that, and I may be wrong, but that, that there, there's a plan that the other development, the, the Dunkin' Donuts thing, that those folks would be relocate, locating to this place also. Um, but I wonder what are they losing in that process? So in terms of square footage, you know, are they getting, are they getting what they're paying for now, um, sort of thing? And so I, I, I kind of, I tend to feel like this thing needs to be right-sized and yes, looking at the charts, it's, um, you know, staggering sort of a difference. So I think, um, as I sit here now, I would say I'm not in favor either.
Uh, Aldi Tushay? Oh, muted.
There we go. Sorry about that. Uh, I, I just want to say Alder Cronin's comments about parking and, and I think others have iterated that. I have to agree. I think we can't think about what people are doing today. We have to have the right number of spaces for the right number of, of people living there. Um, and, you know, to Chad's point about, uh, zoning, I'll be honest, my appetite for more apartments in Verona is zero right now. We've approved crazy amounts of apartments. A ton more are coming. I just, I start wondering when we're going to have so many apartments that we're going to have vacancies and rates going to drop, quality's going to drop. Um, you know, I really just am concerned about that. And I think as we continue adding more apartments, we really need to be aware of how many new people are bringing to Verona. Um, so I agreed, I'm not going to support this. I, I, I really want to see, see it stay in the zoning uh, that it's in. I, I'm all in favor for it being redeveloped. I mean, it's a sixty-year-old building. These old wood structures are hard to keep nice when they get that old. Uh, but at the same time, uh, just stay within the zoning. Thank you.
Um, other, uh, discussion, uh, Alder Ricky, then Alder Posey?
I just also wanted to, um, mention how the, um, parking has already recently been restricted on Industrial Drive and Nine Mound. And so that will add to those parking concerns. And I too have just heard a lot of, um, non-support for this project from residents of Verona. And, um, I think that there are too many exemptions and I'm, you know, open to if the developer is willing to listen to and, and, um, make some changes based on some of those comments. Um, you know, considering it in the future, but I, I don't feel comfortable supporting it, um, for all those reasons we talked about right now, as is either.
Uh, Alder Posey?
Thank you. Uh, so I think in order to be supportive of this, uh, I would need to see a decrease in density and a better parking ratio. Um, also I, you know, we talk a lot about drainage and this obviously increased that surface parking. And I know it backs right up into the drainage for, that runs along the side of the bike trail. Not sure what impact that will have. And so making sure that whatever we're looking at, which I know city staff does a great job at, but you know, I would feel better approving something like this, knowing that that is being taken fully into consideration as part of this and possibly seeing increasing green space. I really have strong concerns about as we keep adding apartments to this area, it's, this is just that, it is that precedent, whether we want it to be or not, whether we can make the changes or not for future developments. This really does, i- it does set that precedence because if you go to that neighborhood, there is apartment building after apartment building after apartment building. And one of the great things about, even though they are apartment buildings, they have a lot of green space. It is spread out. There's plenty of parking. It feels like a neighborhood. And if we want people to have ownership who are living in the apartments and be a part of our community, I really feel strongly that they need to have that opportunity to feel like it's their space, even if it is a large lawn that they're not necessarily using a whole lot. Um, but it does need to feel like a neighborhood. And I think this kind of a development would impact that feeling. And then of course, I think, and this is more of a generalized comment about everything we're doing in this district, is that we are currently approving apartments after apartments, after apartments, and we don't, we're not looking at that whole picture every time we're looking at this. And that's a big concern of mine because we, we all know in our heads what we've seen over the last couple of years and what we have on the books, but nothing is built yet. And to, I feel like as we're looking at this, I want to know updates on timeframes for everything else and when we're going to start to see construction and when everything's going to happen. And as we sit and listen to all this, I think before approval, I want to see some of those things so that we can really evaluate everything as a whole with what we're doing with our entire downtown, rather than just theoretically really see it in a solid form, if that makes sense. So, thank you.
Uh, motion before the body? Other, uh, questions or comments on this motion? See no further, uh, discussion? Um, I'm going to do this, uh, vote by, by raising hands. Um, and so I'll, I'll ask, uh, our hands raised and then I'll count just, just to make sure I get it right. Um, all those in, uh, favor of resolution number R dash two zero dash zero four four approving a general development plan, uh, GDP for a plan unit development for a three-story eighty-unit apartment building, uh, located at one-twenty-one and one-twenty-five Berkeley Road, uh, raise your hand. Okay. All right. All those opposed, raise your hand. Uh, and it fails, uh, one to seven. Um, Mr. Sayer will obviously pass along to the developer and, uh, we will hear what they want to do next. Oh, Mr. Sayer, sorry.
I, I think from a staff standpoint, I, I'd really appreciate some feedback on this. Obviously this went to concept here a couple of months ago. Um, but I, I, I think if density is a concern, I guess would not, and the developers will want to know this too. What number are you guys looking for? Because I don't want to keep spitting our tires in this thing to find out. We keep going back to you guys and we, we, we're not hitting a number that many people like. I mean, so I guess is, is there a range people would be comfortable with? The parking itself, they'll probably work itself out a little bit when you get the density number down. But I guess what are people's thoughts on just a general range for this?
I have Alder Ryan and Alder Kemp.
Thanks. I, I think Alder, um, Posey hit the nail on the head. I feel like we look at things in a silo in isolation and have an opinion about that, but um, I think we need to zoom out and continue to zoom in and zoom out on, you know, projects and the look at the whole. Because I feel like what's going to happen, there's so many things on the boil now that aren't here. And suddenly, boom, they're all going to be here like simultaneously and our city is going to be vastly different seemingly overnight. And we're going to say what the hell happened. Um, and, you know, I, so that's not an answer, uh, particularly good answer to Sayer's question, but, um, you know, I, I, and I think, and I don't think there is a necessarily a good answer for the question. I think it depends on where. I think it depends on, you know, I think, um, Alder Journey hit the nail on the head as well. It's, this isn't quite an infill scenario, right? There's already buildings there which would be demolished and something else built in amongst an existing neighborhood who are accustomed to seeing those existing buildings, um, that have been there for years and years. And so I really think it's case by case. Um, but I do, and I also take the, the, the public comments that were made, um, you know, like, why are there rules if, if we aren't going to adhere to the rules? And so at some point, I, I just think we either, one of two things, we either change the zoning, um, to, to fit, rather than ask for, we shouldn't do things by exemption, right? That shouldn't be the standard. Um, and so, you know, the short answer is case by case, I would say.
Uh, I have Alder Kemp, uh, and then myself.
Um, I guess the question for me, I, I mean, in principle, I am not opposed to this project. If, one, you certainly could get the individuals that would be moved from the motel over there. And then two, if, um, if we knew for a fact, which Adam, you've told us we can't, uh, that rent would stay the same. I know that the rents in those motels are rents that are very affordable for people. Um, the, the third part is if we get the density number down to something that we're comfortable with, say for example, what does this, what does the statute or what does the ordinance say? And it allows us to move those individuals into this new development? Um, then I would ha- I would have no problem with it. It sounds like it's just over. And I don't know why. Is it because they wouldn't have enough space to move those people over? Or are they over because, um, it's not financially feasible for them to do it if they can't get that amount? That's what I need to know.
Okay, um, I have, uh, myself, um, and then Alder Cole. Did I see your hand up? Oh no, sorry. And then I have myself and then I have Alder Journey. So, uh, I guess I'll ta- say two things. I mean, ultimately, um, I guess, you know, the, the council is the one that, uh, decides whether, whatever project, whether it's housing, apartments, commercial, goes in or goes out. And basically, any of us can consider, you know, whatever we want. So I guess I would encourage everyone not to think of it as a silo. Um, but to kind of think of it as a, as a whole picture as you're deciding which projects you want or don't want. Um, you know, a- a- as far as the exemption stuff go, I think, I mean, I think this is, this has been a longstanding thing for Verona. And while we could definitely change stuff, because I'm looking at the, the table, for example, and I'm not saying necessarily that this was, you know, is good or bad. But if you look at the West End Apartments, which were approved a long time ago, well, relatively, you know, they're at forty units per acre. Um, and so if we were going to say use that as a precedent, um, I, I, I personally would be against changing our rules to get rid of exemptions because exemptions give, give all of us leverage. Um, and so basically if we're just like, you know, you can build thirty units per acre, let's say hypothetically, and that's allowed, that means at some point you, you can't say no to the developer, whether you want to or not. And I think, um, if you, you know, if you, if you talk to staff, I think, or anyone really, it's, it's, you, you don't, you don't necessarily want to give up leverage and the, the things like exemptions give, give all of us a chance to ha- uh, have our say. And, and so we can basically, if a project, say, doesn't have enough green space, doesn't fit into the neighborhood, you know, the, the ability to grant exemptions gives us leverage to kind of negotiate things that will make the projects better, uh, uh, for everyone. I think, um, you know, I guess, I guess I'll say a third thing too. I, I it's really hard, I think, to say, you know, what, what unacceptable density level is. Cause you know, if you come in and say, like, there, there's some areas I think that it would make more sense, you know, that thirty would, might be okay, but in other areas, you know, you might, uh, only want twelve. And I think, I think everyone here has been for or against certain kinds of developments. You know, so I think it's, it's kind of a feeling things out. Um, and so I, I, I kind of appreciate the position staff is in, um, and the developer where they might not get a specific number. Uh, but I think, uh, kind of where we're at, I think, if I, if I can turn to the council, I would say it's, it's less density. I know that's not necessarily helped with developer. And if anyone does have a number, I would a hundred percent encourage them, uh, to offer it. Um, I have Alder Journey and then Alder Ryan.
So I too, I mean, I, I wouldn't be totally against the project, but it's, it's a density and parking issue. Um, but, um, within the, the document, it said, um, that, let's see. I think it was, oh, twelve is the dwel- twelve is the dwelling units per acre is the district ma- um, maximum. So, uh, it, I mean, so I would throw that number out and it's obviously less dense.
Um, Alder Ryan?
Thanks. I think I'll, uh, say two things. One, um, again, you know, I, I don't think we should do things by exception. And when the exception becomes the rule, I think that becomes a problem. And so yes, it's good to have. And I, you know, I wasn't, when I was saying like, change the zoning, I don't necessarily mean that sincerely, but I do think, um, that we just have to be cautious and that doing, you know, approving exceptions should be the, uh, should not be the rule, should definitely be, um, rare. Um, and I think my other comment is just that, you know, And I think my other comment is just that, you know, the the truth is that public comments do matter. And so when folks reach out to us as alders and with concerns, that tends to influence our decisions. And I think that's a great thing. I would encourage that more. But, you know, so again, not not super helpful for city staff, but that's the truth, so.
Alder Cole.
As far as the density is concerned, like Mr. Sayer stated, there's, you know, a huge majority of these apartments are, you know, studio one bedrooms. So what they can do is kind of, you know, change it around and make them more two bedrooms, which wouldn't necessarily change the amount of people in the building. It would just change the price, which would, you know, the people who are moving over from the motel, if there's less studios, less one bedrooms, people that are currently in studios and one bedrooms, there's won't be as many as available. So that would definitely increase the price and it wouldn't necessarily be decreasing the amount of people, just the amount of apartments because of the style of apartments. And I I guess that's why, you know, I tended to agree with staff that because of the mix of apartments, the majority of them being, you know, studio and one bedrooms, it didn't seem, you know, as big of a deal as if there was, you know, 46 two-bedroom apartments, that would be a really big deal. You know, or maybe like the West End Apartments, you know, have more, you know, two-bedroom apartments or whatever. And there's 40 of them. Here, it's majority studio and one bedrooms. And yeah, they can fudge with it and make them more two-bedroom, but it's not changing the amount of people necessarily in the building, thus not necessarily changing the amount of, you know, true like population density and parking issues as far as I'm concerned.
Other questions or feedback? Or any guidance for staff when they talk to the developer? Mr. Sayer, did you have a comment?
No, I just, that that helps, even though there's not clear direction that at least puts us in the right direction at least. So I mean, I I do appreciate that. And I know the developer's here tonight and we'll, we'll take the feedback and we'll see where it goes.
Last chance for comments on this topic. Alder Ricky.
You could ask if they could promote the potential use of the Bird scooters with the residents there to park in.
We haven't even agreed to accept that.
No, no, I know, but that would help direct the Public Safety and Welfare Committee in that regard, well, because you park 30 of them in one parking spot. So just food for thought on the parking situation.
I'm not going to say anything about birds since it's not on the agenda, but, okay. Any other comments about the Berkeley Road development? Seeing none, we will stay on 9B Plan Commission. Alder Cole.
Next up, I'd like to make a motion to approve resolution R dash 20 dash zero four five, approving a general development plan to construct a 160,430 square foot wholesale building and fuel facility with a maximum of 24 pumping locations in the southwest corner of County Highway M and Thousand Oaks Trail.
Motion by Alder Cole. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Ricky. Alder Cole.
Thank you. The Plan Commission held the required public hearing on November 4th, 2020, and there were no public comments. Comments from the Plan Commission included support for the building design and landscaping, encouragement for future solar panels on the wholesale building, pleasure with the additional addition of electric car charging stations and solar panels on the fuel facility canopy, and support for employment of people within the area. The Plan Commission voted seven to zero to approve the general development plan with the following conditions. A, prior to the GDP becoming effective, the city and Costco shall enter into a store rehabilitation slash vacant store agreement. And B, the GDP shall become effective upon Costco, the applicant acquiring the property.
Thank you for that explanation. Questions, comments on this motion? Alder Cronin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is just a question of ignorance on my part, because I think I'm probably one of the only people in Verona who does not have a membership to Costco. Can people who aren't members get gas at Costco's gas station or do you have to have a membership?
Alder Tushay, do you know the answer?
You need a membership. You have to swipe your membership number before you can buy gas.
Good to know. Thank you.
Other questions, comments, Alder Ricky?
I feel like we've talked about this before, that 24 seems like a lot of pumps when we have a lot of other gas stations in Verona. So was that reconsidered by the developer or could it be?
Mr. Sayer?
I don't recall it coming up. I know the developer's here tonight. We could bring bring him into the meeting, but I don't recall that consideration coming up from the developer. I think 24 is a standard number they have in other other fueling locations.
Other questions or comments on Alder Ryan?
Just a, just a comment. I, I, people don't necessarily see it or believe me, but I think that electric cars are the future and gas, ICE cars are not. And I think we'll see that very quickly change. I am not super, I'm not a fan at all of having the gas pumps. I do appreciate the efforts to put in the, you know, solar panels and so forth, but just a general comment, I I certainly hope going forward that we're not approving many more gas pumps here in Verona. So just a comment.
Motion before the body? Other questions or comments on the motion? Oh, Mr. Sayer.
Just just want to follow up. I know that the developer just emailed me and said it's actually 18 pumps initially, and they could expand to 24 in the future. So it's actually only 18, so I apologize for that.
So are we still approving 24 and they initially planned to put in 18 or are we approving 18? Mr. Sayer?
Yeah, that's me. I forgot to unmute. Typically, when these expand and make changes in the past, we do that at administrative level. So I mean, my preference would be to do it at 24, just because typically when we made changes, the pumps doesn't get back to Plan Commission and Council because it's a pretty minor amendment. If it's all, if it's all there, I'd keep it at 24. That'd be my recommendation.
Okay, so currently the motion as read does approve 24, even though they only plan to build 18 initially, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Motion before the body? Other questions or comments on this motion? I'll just call myself real quick. I do, I do look forward to the addition of jobs to the Verona neighborhood, I think, the Verona community. I think it's really good that we kind of keep diversifying our job space, to use kind of buzzwords, but yeah. More jobs at a variety of different businesses, I think, are good for the community. I I appreciate the solar panels and I hope that they consider expanding their solar array. And I do appreciate the vehicle charging stations that are being included. And like Alder Ryan said, I think there's a potential for a lot more electrical vehicles and, you know, maybe it'll turn out that too isn't enough. But I guess we'll see. Any further discussion on this topic? Alder Journey.
Just one question that kind of, so if if we're saying up to 24 gas pumps, would that also include that there could be more charging stations? As opposed to to gas pumps?
Mr. Sayer?
Yeah, I would think they were. The charging stations are separate in the parking lot. That's where you typically see those up. So in the past, you know, for example, that there's one by Sugar River Pizza in Liberty Business Park. That's not something we typically approve as part of the site plan process. That's just something the developer chose to put in. So it's not uncommon for those to kind of just, I want to say, pop up, but they 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 pop up and those are based upon obviously demand and need. So, yeah, there there could be in the future, they would just take a parking space and put that in and no different than it is now. I think Festival Foods has a couple of them as well. Somebody could park in that even though they're not charging their car. I'm not sure why they would do that, but those could just go in today if they chose. We don't, we don't regulate those. I've never looked at one before.
Although we'll add for maybe more information that it it's more expensive to retrofit, though. Alder Tushay.
I'm kind of having fun here, but who's to say it's not hydrogen pumps or some alternate fuel technology that comes in? So I I'd like to be as optimistic as everyone else. I have real concerns about batteries and recycling and using them, just like windmills are now starting to fill landfills. I'd love this technology and honestly, not burning gas is great. I'm just, I don't think we have it fully figured out yet. Thank you.
Other questions or comments on Costco or the future of renewable energy in America? Seeing no further comments? All those in favor of resolution number R dash two zero dash zero four five approving a planned unit development, general development plan that would allow for the construction of 160,430 square foot warehouse and 24 pump fuel stations located south of County Highway M, west of Thousand Oaks Trail, north of American Way, and east of County Highway PB. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed, no? And that motion passes. Anything further from Plan Commission?
No, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Next, we'll move on to 9C, Public Works Sewer and Water Committee. Alder Tushay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Public Works has one item today and it's fairly procedural. I'm making a motion to approve the closeout for project ID 2020 dash 107, the 2020 Rapid Rectangular Flashing Beacon Installation.
Motion by Alder Tushay. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Alder Kemp. Alder Tushay.
Thank you. Cummings and Turk Incorporated have successfully completed the the flashing beacon installation project for this year. There was one on North Main Street and St. Andrew Church driveway, North Nine Mound Road and Edward Street, South Nine Mound Road and Military Ridge Trail. And lastly, Whalen Road and Military Ridge Drive. This closes out all of Cummings and Turk's work. The final payment will be issued very soon. This is a fair, a pretty big rarity for Public Works. No increase, no decrease, number spot on, which is why this is more procedural. The contract they were awarded was $20,905. That is all.
Thank you for the explanation. Questions, comments on the project closeout motion? Seeing no further discussion? All those in favor of project closeout for project ID 2020 dash 107 Rapid Rectangular Flashing Beacon Installation, say aye. Opposed, no? And that motion passes. Are we on to item 10, adjournment? Motion to adjourn would be in order. I think that might have been Alder Kemp first. Is there a second? All those in favor of adjournment, say aye. Opposed, no? And we are adjourned at 8:12 PM. Thank you.